Good afternoon, everybody. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District here at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, June 11th. We are at the Center for Economic Development. And as we begin our meeting, let me call for a quorum. And I'll start with Mr. Kroll.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Dr. Adame.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
And I am Libby Everett, and we do have a quorum and can conduct business. We will go ahead and start this regular meeting as well with a moment of silence. Mr. Kelly, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our team flag. Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the united states of America and to the revolution which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute." Is there anybody here for general public comment of any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward with our agenda and start with recognitions. And Dr. Rivera, you are up first, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Regents. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize an individual for just the sheer determination, and also happy to announce through that determination, the college will yet again be able to serve its adult education learners, otherwise known as GED students, and our English second language students through a Texas Workforce Commission grant that was just awarded to us not more than a few weeks ago. And the grant is something that I made a promise to Dr. Eskamia back in 2018 when it transitioned from us to the service center, and I said, "We will get it back." And Dr. Eskamia and Board of Regents, we got it back home where it belongs. And so happy to announce that the grant will service approximately 4,700 students going on from July 1st of 2024, five years out, at least 4,700 students, if not more. And the grant will give us a proceed of about $6.45 million in total grant award. So wanted to recognize the individual that led that effort. It's Ms. Rachel Benavides. I'm going to ask her to step up here, please, Ms. Rachel. And just to recognize Ms. Rachel's accomplishments and put things in perspective. So not only that she and her team masterminded this grant application for the college, again getting us the six-point, almost $6.5 million grant, but over the course of her tenure here at Delmar College, she's amassed in total dollars over $10 million worth of grants. And so that's a great achievement in my book, and I wanted to recognize the TWC Award because that's special to all our hearts, I believe, but also recognize the great efforts of our finest staff member, our senior director, soon-to-be Dr. Rachel Benavides. So Rachel, you want to say a couple of words?
Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia, thank you so much for the wonderful opportunity that you provide every day to be able to serve my community. It's a privilege and an honor to work with these students. It's something that we made a promise that we would definitely bring back, and I'm so happy that I'm able to stand up here today and say that the promise has been kept, and we are going to be ready to go July 1st and bring those students back to Delmar College where they belong. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Let me just say thank you on behalf of the Board. Certainly, thank you. Congratulations. We wholeheartedly agree with you and Dr. Rivera that it belongs here, and we know how to do this best. And it is such, I mean, just to say it's an important service that we provide to our community is such an understatement. It is hugely needed, and it's needed to be done correctly, and that's what we can do here. So thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move to the college president's report. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of items of note here. On May 16th, and then maybe one other. Jeff, are we okay for that other one? Okay. I may take the privilege, just notifying the Board. Some things come between the time we post and the times we open up the meetings, and if you don't take an opportunity with that window, things go stale. And there's some hot news that I want to share with. It's fun. It's a fun piece. But first, I'll just cover very quickly. On May 16th, we had the Incident Management Training here at Delmar College where we know June 1st what that brings, but it brings hurricane season and so forth from the bigger-picture instance. But incidents are incidents, and they happen any time of the year. I was very proud that Chief Lauren and others, Tammy McDonald and others, put together an Incident Management Training scenario where we tabletop some things and played out, did some role-playing and so forth as to what the team would actually do in case of certain types of incidents and so forth. So I want you to know that your leadership team is here, they're involved, and doing everything we possibly can to get ready for any and all types of incidents. Hats off to the team, to the facilities, and the emergency management teams, health and safety teams that are here, that are really the technical experts that when it all happens, shall we say, that we get out of the way, and they're the ones that roll up their sleeves, already have their boots on, and are diving into, you know, people are running from smoke, they're running to the smoke, so to speak. Knock on wood, we don't want any smoke, but anymore. Anyway, so that Incident Management Training did take place. Your team is engaged, and it is very much at the forefront of our agenda, especially as we move into hurricane season on top of everything else. And then very quickly, this is just kind of a note for the future, and then I'll get into our little surprise piece that surprises us all, by the way. July 10th through the 12th, I'll be attending a National Forum on Educational Policy in Washington, DC with the accrediting agencies across the nation to sit on a panel to discuss the implications of HBA in my part as Commissioner myself and Chancellor Brenda Hillier from San Jacinto College, my dear, dear friend and colleague. And I will prepare a presentation to go up there and talk to a national panel on our efforts with HBA and all the wonderful things there. Well, pros and cons, because it's not all wonderful, right? Nothing can be. But it certainly is a very positive thing. So just heads up on that. This will precede the next board meeting and so forth. So I just want to let you all know that I'll be engaged there as well. And then finally, for my note, there's a little bit of a note. Jeff called me, I don't know, this weekend sometime, and said, "Heads up, I can't let this go." And I said, "Well, don't let it go. Let's squeeze it in the president's report, because we need to celebrate things, and we need to have a little sprinkles on the cake, if you will." And I think this is probably much more than just sprinkles. I don't mean to minimize it at all, but it is certainly a piece that, Jeff, you want to come up and talk about what's going on here and what happened over the week, or what's transpired here in the past days?
Sure. I would love to. And I'm not going to tell you all about it. I'm going to let the person responsible tell you about it. But in short, something pretty extraordinary happened this last week, and it's staggering, really. We reached more people on social media than we have ever reached before, and the person responsible for that is sitting right back here, and that's Jesse Krybozinski. And I'd like to thank her. I'd like to thank her and her supervisor, Jason Houlihan, for the work they're doing, and turn it over to her to tell you a little bit about what they did. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't even know where to start. It's been pretty incredible to witness the amount of growth that this video has resonated with people with worldwide. Obviously, as you can see the stats here, this video was supposed to just be a fun way to kind of highlight graduation and...
What are the stats?
Six, well, as of, this was like, I don't know, an hour or two ago. As of now, it's like 17 million plays.
Seventeen million.
Yeah. What I think is really cool is that 87,000 people across the world have shared this, which I think is a clear reflection of the power of organic social media when we commit to creating content that is intentional, high-quality, and engaging for our audience. And I think that we were able to witness this opportunity because of our commitment to that. So yeah, it's been pretty cool to watch. Thank you all for engaging with it and sharing it and everything you guys did to make it a success.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I have, this is amazing creativity. I mean, you know, who would have thought isolating it on shoes can bring out such a personality of the entire event as such? So Jesse, thank you very much. By the way, she can add that she had a splendid professor at TAMU CC who she learned everything from.
This is true. This is true.
Thanks, Jesse.
So with that, Dr. Babaly, that concludes my president's report.
So I will just say, I think this is true for probably any of us, the first time we sat on stage to watch a graduation, invariably we comment on the shoes, right? And I see it at almost every graduation. So that was such a smart, fun way to capture the diversity of our students, right? And do we, let me ask a quick question. Sorry, I'm going off a little bit. But do we purposely target influencers, or was this truly an organic spreading of that video?
It was truly organic.
That's so fabulous. Really good. Really, really good. And just the work you all have done, certainly. Jeff, thank you for your leadership. Thank you so much for your creativity. I feel so old. And, but I'm so glad we have bright minds working for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we move on, we're going to do a very, very brief Regents Report. I'd like to recognize Dr. Turner, who just wanted to say a few congratulatory words.
Yes, so I wanted to do a shout-out for Dr. Leonard Rivera. And where's Ms. Gracie Martinez? On May 13th and 14th, our middle school, GP Middle School, had a college and career fair, and nine Delmar departments showed up for two days and really engaged our students. They reached 1,100 students from sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, and these kids were hungry for information. And one of the things they learned was that when it's time for them to get educated and find a career, they knew to come to Delmar because Delmar will have a program that's tailored for them. And it was a great comments from the staff at Delmar and staff and students at our middle schools. So I just hope to encourage reaching out to more middle schoolers within our district. But I just wanted to give them a shout-out and say thank you so much because it took a lot of time and...
Thank you so much, Dr. Turner. Very, very well-deserved thanks, and we appreciate those efforts. We know it is taxing and time-consuming, and thank you for that recognition. Before we go into staff reports, we are going to move up item four on the agenda so we can go ahead and talk about the Professor Emeritus recommendation, and I will recognize Dr. Jonda Halcom to do that, please.
Thank you. Esteemed Regents, Dr. Eskamia, I am pleased today to present Philip He to you for consideration of Emeritus status. Philip, could you come forward, please? Emeritus status is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. This is an important and very distinguished honor today. Your packet contains the policy concerning eligibility, and there before you is the policy. Eligibility for the award of Emeritus status includes distinction in the areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. Your packet lists the areas of distinguished service, the eligibility criteria, and how Professor He qualified are in a table in your packet. Let me point out a couple of highlights in that table. You can see one area of eligibility is that you must be a full-time member of the faculty for at least 10 years. He's been here 35 years. And one other area, distinction in professional practice, you have a list of so many things that he's been involved with over the many years. But one thing that I think stands out is his outstanding teaching that is exemplified in his student retention and completion. And he's served so much as a mentor to our students. He's developed new instructional techniques. I'll highlight the art of virtuosity for guitar as one of those. He's demonstrated recognized leadership in the professional area through awards given by the college and other professional organizations. He has published numerous articles that you'll see in his CV and also performances on CDs. He's provided outstanding service to our students. Once again, mentoring our students is a big one in the area of guitar. And he has been so involved in educational growth, as you can see, through the many performances that he has done, his numerous recordings as well. And he has really served our college and our community through this instructional service component. So we also have his CV, which will list his educational achievements, as well as his recordings and publications in a nice, neat list. So you can see Philip He is a very accomplished performer and educator. Within the body, I'm going to read a resolution to you here in just a moment, like I normally do, and in that body, I will mention other things that I haven't previously mentioned today. Now, a person upon receiving Emeritus status will gain some privileges, such as being listed in the college catalog, college directory, and mailing list, just to name a few items. Our faculty Emeritus consideration today was recommended by the department chair, the music department chair, that is, the divisional dean, the faculty council, and the chief academic officer, myself, following the outlined policies and procedures. I'm going to now read a resolution and recognition of Philip He, which highlights those achievements I just mentioned. Okay. Whereas Philip He, professor of music, served as an exemplary tenured educator among his peers at the college for 35 years. During his tenure at the college, Mr. He provided distinguished contributions with his artistic and scholarly work for the music department. Additionally, he provided excellent leadership since he began his service as the college as a full-time tenure-track instructor in fall 1988 until his retirement in summer of 2023. He has commended for his commitment to our students, his colleagues, the college, the community, the surrounding area, and most notably to the music field. Whereas Philip He dedicated countless hours recruiting prospective students and preparing students for performances and fundraising events in the community and the college. He contributed several musical arrangements for guitar ensemble created to fit the musical and pedagogical needs of the students. He provided advising and leadership for these students and mentored them along with their educational paths and growths as musicians. Whereas Philip He provided his experience and expertise to his colleagues and former guitar students who are now guitar teachers in the surrounding high schools where programs have flourished. He hosted summer guitar camps for high school students in the community, offering pedagogical and musical training. He also contributed his expertise to several professional journals, such as Soundboard, International Guitarerie and Lut, and American String Teacher. He performed and recorded Bach Transcriptions, Stream of Consciousness, and Chopin Nocturnes that were published and released on CD. Now therefore be it resolved that Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to the college and community by recognizing Philip He with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, June 11th, 2024. So I would now ask you to accept this resolution and confer Emeritus status on Philip He.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, guys. Okay. I'm going to let Dr. Adame have this one as a fellow guitarist. So you've made the motion, and I will let Carl, Mr. Kroll, second that motion.
And student of Dr. He.
Oh, and student. Okay. Well, we'll get to comments in a minute. But let's go ahead and vote so we can all applaud and celebrate. Is there any discussion among the Board before we vote? Okay. Or publicly, any public comment? Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand high. Yep. Any opposed? No. Okay. You are definitely welcome to make some comments, please.
Well, I came to this college in 1988 for an interview wearing the same necktie. And I never thought at the time that I'll be staying here 36 years later, being given this incredible honor. So I really want to thank the Board for this great honor. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank Dr. Halcom, Dr. Bridges, and Ms. Longoria. And as I told one of my friends, being a part of the Delmar family has been the greatest honor of my life. And I have been very blessed with all the great outstanding students I had, and just it's been a great 35 years, and I really cherish every moment of it. So I would like to thank the Board again and everybody else for this great honor. Thank you.
I don't want to shortchange the Board. Are there any Board comments? Dr. Adame.
Philip, you know, I've known you, I think my first course I had with you was pretty close to 20 years ago. And, you know, we've been friends ever since. I've always told you that, you know, your expertise, your world-renowned talent has bought prestige to Delmar College, and for that I am truly grateful for, especially knowing you, being taught by you, and look at the family of teachers that you provided that have your technique, your thinking, your ethics that go along with all this. You know, I could go on and on, but Philip, thank you very much for gracing us with your presence.
Thank you so much.
Yes, congratulations, and thank you very much for your generosity, your kindness with the students, and frankly, for making us all look good, you know? You are what Delmar College is about, and we are just so grateful to have you with us. Thank you very much. Okay. One more. Okay, we will go back up on the agenda to staff reports. And Mr. Garcia, you are out of the box first, please, with our preliminary budget discussion.
So thank you, Regent Everett, Mr. President, members of the Board. We're going to pull any, yeah, there we go, we do have a presentation for you. So today's final budget update will set the stage for the budget workshop scheduled for July 23rd. The team is prepared to go over the preliminary budget figures and the underlying assumptions. The team will also point out some preliminary resources allocated to kick-start the new five-year strategic plan that was discussed this morning. So our ask for today of the Board is that you please provide your perspective on today's financial information as we look towards finalizing the 2025 proposed budget plan at the workshop. So Ms. Landrum will now kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Good afternoon. So for our budget calendar, we haven't changed anything on that. In July, we will come back on the 23rd and do our budget workshop. We'll have more detail on our fiscal year 2025 budget. August 13th, we will seek the Board's approval to conduct our public hearing. On August 27th, where we will seek the Board's approval for our proposed 2025 budget and our proposed property tax rate. So for tuition and fees, based on current information, we have decided to go with an overall flat change. Originally, we were going to decrease our tuition and fees and remove that 2% enrollment growth that we did not see this fiscal year. However, since we have received some preliminary numbers for our summer enrollment, we have decided to leave that 2% in there, expecting our enrollment to hopefully increase by 2% next year. So this also includes that $2 increase in our in-district tuition rate that was approved in February. For our property tax revenue, we are still using that 2% valuation growth, and we'll reevaluate that once we get our certified property values. For new construction, we are still using that $400 million estimate that was provided by the appraisal district. And although there are negotiations going on between the industrial partners and the appraisal district, we are still leaving that adjustment in there for our industrial lawsuits. Once everything is finalized, we will reevaluate that adjustment. For state appropriations, we were, we're still waiting on those final numbers. We did receive an update in May after we had our meeting. We have adjusted accordingly for that update. And then we were expecting an update yesterday, but we haven't received that information yet. So the methodology for forecasting the outcomes still hasn't changed. For our credential outcomes, they're looking at using that fiscal year 2018 through 2023 data and fiscal year 2020 through 2023 for our occupational skills award. For fast appropriations, we are still including that 4% for our dual enrollment based on what we received in fall of '23 and spring of '24. Do we have any questions before I move on? Okay. So for our preliminary revenue budget, with the recent preliminary numbers from the coordinating Board, they are now estimating a decrease of $196,000 in our performance funding. With the 4% increase that we're projecting for our dual enrollment, we are anticipating an additional $45,000. And then with the $2 increase in our in-district tuition rate and the expected 2% in our enrollment growth, we are remaining flat overall from this year to next year. And then with that 2% valuation growth... And then with that 2% valuation growth and the $400 million in new construction, we are estimating an increase in property tax revenue of that $6.5 million. So that brings our total increase in our preliminary revenue right now of $6.4 million, overall a 6% increase.
Just really quickly, the $196,000 number, we expected it to grab your attention and we left it in very purposefully. There's still some settle-up opportunities, if I'm not mistaken, that still have to be done. In other words, some year-end reconciliation with the state. But what we wanted to do is, is let you, is leave that number, because it's a real number, we believe, but it's a very conservative number also. We all agreed, right, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Landrum, that when we put this in there, we're like, look, let's, let's, let's stay on the conservative side, let's go in. We didn't know how negotiations from the appraisal district were gonna go at the time. We still had our fingers crossed on some, the certain things and so forth. All things considered, now moving forward, we think things will, will be, although they're still not bad at all in terms of the overall outlook, we think that these, these categories could and, and might even improve as we reconcile the year-end with the state and some other things. Mr. Garcia, you're gonna, you're leaning in for a comment, please.
Yes, sir. So essentially, you know, these numbers again are very conservative as our president just spoke about. And so if anything, I just wanted, we just wanted to have some information for the purpose of discussion. It is a baseline of what the expenses could look like and is just encouraging the board to have a discussion of what it looks like today. But obviously, the numbers are still being worked out at the state level and we still need some information from our assessor's office. Things will change. But we're also looking for your input so that we can have a very robust conversation at our workshop. And these are the numbers that we know today and it's just a baseline. It could change very easily.
Yeah, very likely. And so as such, we, again, we, we decided to, we, we never want to overestimate anything and, and so that's, that's why it's there. Please continue, Ms. Landrum, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So with our preliminary assumptions for our property tax revenue, we are estimating an overall increase, a very small overall increase in our total property tax rate. Our debt service rate will likely decrease a little bit and then our M&amp;O rate will likely increase a little bit. So as you can see in this graph, our tax rate decreased quite a bit for fiscal year 2024 due to those large valuation increases last year. And those increased valuations caused that no new revenue rate to drop, which lowered our overall tax rate. So with the 2% valuation increase that we're estimating, this causes our no new revenue rate to rise just a little bit. And adding that 7.999% that we're allowed to go above the no new revenue rate, it is just a slight increase in our total tax rate compared to fiscal year 2024. So based on the average home value of $245,920, a homeowner could potentially pay around $598 in property tax due to the college. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay. Dr. West will now discuss our strategic plan and resource allocation.
Thank you, Jackie. Good afternoon, Regent. This is the part of our budget presentation where we emphasize the importance of aligning the resources with our strategic plan. So we have our pyramid here that starts out with where we're at right now with reviews and recommendations. And in the process of doing our resource allocation, House Bill aid is one of our major initiatives for this budget year. And then it's to make sure that we have adequate resources to support the strategic plan, goals, and initiatives so that we achieve the mission of the college. And for this year, budget year 2025, we're going to have our new strategic plan that you guys discussed this morning. And we've listed our goals and initiatives here on this slide that communicate, collaborate across the college, connect beyond the college, elevate, increase completion for our students, and maximize resources entrusted to the college, and cultivate, nurture our faculty and staff to achieve their full potential and optimize the Viking student experience. Here are our strategic plan initiatives that we're focusing on this year. And of course, the top one, increase completion for all students. And we have, want to make sure on each one of these that we have adequate resources to support these. So we're looking at resources for all these items that I've listed, our new bachelor's degree program in organizational management and leadership. And of course, any program that needs instructional equipment, we're being sure to have the resources for that. And then optimizing our Viking student experience. We have the creation of the new ideal student experience and we want to have resources for promoting our DMC programs and recruit students. And then last but not least, but maximizing our resources entrusted to the college. And here we have listed maintaining our campuses and that's providing resources for the day-to-day maintenance and then any type of deferred maintenance that could pop up. And now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Tammy for salary and benefits.
Thank you, Dr. West.
Regents, as we have in the past, what we have today is we have provided the board with three different scenarios. And like Mr. Garcia said, this is all for discussion purposes and also just as we're in place and time. And as we move forward into the discussion for this budget update, we're use, we are going to be using scenario two. We, we plug the scenario two numbers into the discussions that you will see coming up. But scenario one, for full-time faculty, we have allotted a 1% increase to the schedules for rank, education, and base pay, and then the one-year experience pay at the $829. We have also added a 5% increase to the schedule for adjunct pay and our adjunct schedule is also used to pay overload to our full-time faculty. And that particular schedule has not been increased since fiscal year 2016. So we felt that there was a need to, to provide that. On scenario one, for exempt employees, this also includes our instructional employees that are designated as exempt for CE and workforce, a 1% increase. Non-exempt full-time, a 1% increase. And then we have a, for our non-exempt part-time, which excludes work-study, student assistance, instructional, and grants. We have about 80 to 90, I'm gonna call them regular, on a regular basis, part-time employees that they stay with us. And they are renewed pretty much every September 1st. It's that core group of our part-time employees. These others I just mentioned, they come and go, you know, student assistants, they're here a semester or maybe a year. Same thing with work-study, you know, grants are paid out of grant dollars. And then instructional, you could have a part-time instruction and they may come one time a semester and teach one skill set for a few hours a week, or it could be, those are based off of basically the demand for whatever they're teaching. So those are not going to be included in this scenario. So we did apply a 3% increase to that core group of part-time, because we have not historically put something in the budget to make sure that that core group does receive an increase. So we thought that we needed to start planning for that as we move forward. So that's scenario one. So if you follow the column on down, you'll see that for full-time faculty, the scenario I just provided, along with the adjunct overload increase and benefits, it'd be a little bit over $1 million for scenario one for faculty. For exempt, along with the benefits, $196,000. And the non-exempt full-time, plus what I just discussed on the non-exempt part-time and benefits, about $173,000. So scenario one is about 1.4 million. So if you look at scenario two, basically all things are equal except the 1% changes to a 2%. And then scenario three is, is the two changes to a three. So if we do scenario two with the components of 2%, but we're leaving adjunct at five and part-time, non-exempt at three, then you would see that the total for faculty of salary and benefits would be a little over 1.3. The total for exempt would be close to $400,000. And the total for non-exempt would be 275. So that scenario is just right over $2 million. Okay? And then so you go on down scenario three. So the total for scenario three at 3% would be almost 2.6, a little over $2.5 million. So any questions about the scenarios that we've provided? Like I said, going forward to plug in for the expense purposes on, on this budget discussion, we did use scenario two.
Just a quick comment. For the employees out there that are watching, and I know we have different representatives of different facets of the, of the college here. I know our faculty council chair is here, Mr. Oseco-Teste, thank you for your valuable time, Joe. These are placeholders, these are discussions, these are the very, again, like all the other numbers, they're very conservative, they're very preliminary, they're for discussion points because there were so many, and there's still several unknowns going into this. And so as we go through these processes, it's important that we're here at the table. But regents, what I'd like for you all to know is that the representatives that are all here, representing the different facets of the, of the college employment, employee base, is very, very important. It's a, it's a, it's a true shared approach when we, when we talk about these things. And I take all things under consideration and an advisement from these groups. And so it's important that we recognize that who's here in the audience with us. And obviously, there's probably a few watching. Thank you.
Mr. Loeb?
On the adjunct pay, do we, do we have any comparisons to what our peer colleges pay for adjuncts?
Okay, we participate in, and it's a, it's a benchmark that we use for part-time and full-time faculty with the Texas Community College Teachers Association. And they release their data like every November. So out of the 50 colleges, community colleges in Texas, we rank number nine out of 50 as far as adjunct pay.
Okay.
And, yeah, we rank nine.
Thank you. I, I just want to say I like three and I think we definitely need to do the adjunct pay because, you know, no increase in eight years is, I mean, we've had a huge amount of inflation.
Yes, and, and as a reminder, it's not only adjunct pay, it's overload pay as well. So that, for, for those who may want a little bit more information about that, overload pay is for our full-time faculty who take above and beyond the contracted number of courses that are agreed upon. And as the rates for that fall under that rate as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And remember, I mean, this was referenced earlier, we will have our budget workshop next month where we'll have a lot more definitive information and robust conversation, I'm sure.
Yes, as Dr. West said, this is a placeholder and it is for discussion purposes and it kind of gives you an idea of dollars as we move forward. Okay, thank you.
So for our preliminary expenses, we are still analyzing the data, but we have determined some priority items for next year that align with the college's strategic plan and House Bill aid initiatives. So for our goal of increasing completion for all students, we have identified a need for new or updated instructional equipment, along with new program offerings such as the Bachelor of Applied Science, Organizational Management and Leadership. For our goal to optimize the student Viking experience, Mr. Olson and his team have been working on that new ideal student experience and promoting those DMC programs and recruiting students. For our goal to maximize resources entrusted to the college, we have identified needs for general maintenance across all campuses, along with addressing some of the deferred maintenance across the Heritage and Windward campuses. There is also additional needs for ground maintenance and custodial to maintain all of our campuses. We also have the election expense in fiscal year '25, so we do have that included. And then we are also considering allocating funds to support House Bill aid initiatives. We are still working on exactly what those items will be and we'll have additional details on that at our workshop in July. So for our preliminary expense budget, we are expecting an increase in our faculty salaries due to that $829 experience pay that was approved this year. And then we're anticipating an increase in our adjunct expenses. So currently, we are factoring that scenario two for our salary increases, which will be about 1.6 million in salaries, and then the $432,000 in benefits, which brings our preliminary expense budget changes for salary and benefits to 2.4 million. For our non-salary categories, we are currently estimating about 3.8 million and an increase of $96,000 for our contingency, bringing our total preliminary expense increase of 6.4 million. Do we have any questions? Okay. So now we're gonna go into a little bit more detail on our preliminary expense budget based on those categories that we use in our monthly financials. I would like to note again that these numbers are still very preliminary. We are still analyzing department requests and they will likely change before we get to our July workshop. As we discuss salary and benefits, we're looking at a change of about 2.4 million. For non-salary expenses, several of the increases on here are the requests throughout the college that are still being reviewed, but we did prioritize some categories that support this college's strategic plan. So for that goal of maximizing resources entrusted to the college, we are looking to allocate around $700,000 to maintenance and repairs for general maintenance on all our campuses, including ground maintenance and custodial to maintain our physical resources. For our goal to increase completion for all students, we are looking to allocate around $550,000 for instructional equipment, $137,000 for that new ideal student experience, and we are looking to allocate about $708,000 for computer software to create programs in response to individual and community needs, as well as enhance our instructional environments to facilitate student success. For insurance, our policy this year did come in less than we anticipated, so we are estimating a decrease next year, so we are reallocating those funds. So we did include two different categories on this slide, just so, just to isolate the amounts that we're looking at considering for deferred maintenance and House Bill aid initiatives. In addition to allocating funds for, for that regular repair and maintenance for all of our campuses, we are also looking to allocate about $550,000 for the deferred maintenance across the Heritage and Windward campuses. This will support our goal of maximizing resources entrusted to the college by maintaining our physical resources. Again, for House Bill aid initiatives, we'll have more detail on what those items are gonna include when we meet at our workshop in July. So for our preliminary expense budget, we are currently estimating an increase of 3.8 million for our non-salary expenses. And with that, $96,000 for our contingency, that brings our preliminary expense budget to $121,633,020. Is there any questions? Okay, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Seeing no questions, we will move on to our next staff report. Mr. Shreboz is gonna talk to us about our Heritage Campus.
Regents, President, this is an update on your Heritage Campus project reports, projects. So some background, you've seen this before, your 2014 bond, the elect, the bonds were sold in 2015, the actual election was on November 4th of 2014. So we're 10 years after that election to finish up these projects. And preliminary work was even before that. So a little bit of history lesson there. Budget summary, the proceeds from the bonds, $157 million. Through May 31st, we've earned almost $5 million in interest income, so it's a total of 160, almost $162 million. We've got completed projects at $94 million, active projects at $68 million. And we've got some other projects, I work directly day-to-day with finance about our budgets and how we allocate the funds. The completed projects, Osso Creek Campus, master planning, Windward Campus, Workforce Development Center, Emergency Technology Building, the fire hydrants, Richards Auditorium flooring, Ventnor's Fire Alarm, Heritage Building demolition, the General Academic Music Building. Then these, these are projects that are active, but they're substantially complete. We've got general expenses, we've got some master planning we've been working on that are kind of district-wide. The ambient learning environment at Osso Creek, Windward Campus, we did some design work. The pilot plan is complete, the Campus Edge Project that both Windward and Heritage is on hold. The Ambient Learning Environment at Osso Creek, Windward Campus, we did some design work. The pilot plan is complete. The Campus Edge Project that both Windward and Heritage is on hold. General Purpose Renovations on hold. Re-roofing projects we did complete, almost $8,700,000 worth. Central Plant improvements at both Heritage and Windward at $5 million. Heldenfeld renovations on hold. Harvyn Center renovations on hold. The police station is complete. I'll talk some more about it. Almost $4 million. And then here where you are today in the boardroom. So your active projects, fine arts music renovation, that's the total project. That's not construction. That's everything going into it, all the soft costs as well. At about $12.2 million, Memorial renovation at 15.5 million, the White Library renovation at 27.8 million. The police station, Architects Turner Ramirez Architects, General Contractor Victory Building Team, 6,174 gross square feet. Chief White is in the process of moving into that building and starting operations there. Your police force is operational. Some photos of the police station on the inside of it and the exterior. It is a secure parking for police vehicles and everything the chief needs, that the chief was directly involved in the layout of this building, design and construction of it. Liking Hall, which was the old music building, Architect Turner Ramirez Architects, General Contractor Victory Building Team, eight classrooms, one computer lab, 20 faculty offices. Faculty's in the process of moving into this location now, and they'll start classes in the summer session two, and fall they'll be fully operational. The courtyard's been redone. It's kind of a forgotten space over time. It's totally different now. It's ADA compatible and compliant, and anyone can be in there. It's really nice. Courtyard turned out really well now. Some of the classrooms and some of the just open spaces around there, there's a lot of gathering spaces for the students. It's a welcoming environment. The faculty was directly involved in overall layouts, the furniture selections, all the elements of the classrooms. White Library renovation, Architect Turner Ramirez Architects, General Contractor BeCrawf Construction, 97,200 gross square feet. The renovation's almost complete. We're looking at fall occupancy in the fall. We've got furniture scheduled to come in after Labor Day. And so this fall, we'll be moved in, fully operational on that. I know Dean Gregg's looking forward to moving in there right away. We've got books scheduled to start going in this summer. Shelving's already in there. It's coming along really well. And I know we'll take you up there. It's a view you can't beat. It's the best view in the county. Here are some of the views of it from there. This is from the fifth floor, and both these are kind of giving, showing in the foreground, you've got the Gambi Building, but you can see all the way to downtown. You can see the refineries. You can see the bay. You can see everything.
See the new bridges.
See the new bridges.
The big bridge juxtaposed to the little bridge. It's a beautiful sight.
Exactly. The architects, the colors, everything in this building is just fantastic. It's a totally redone building. Then you have the Memorial Building renovation. You can see the difference between being power washed and not power washed. The Architects Denact and Associates, General Contractor Spodlass, 28,200 gross square feet. We're looking at complete renovation by later this summer and full occupancy in the fall. Everyone moving in there, the president, all of the staff that you see here moving into that building. We're all looking forward to it. These are some of the renderings of what it'll look like when it's finished. It's going to be a totally different building. Parking lot's complete. We've got one up front. The one behind we'll be working on also, next to Richardson. And so again, that one of the other nice thing about these projects being finished, there's been a multi-year concern about parking shortage. And so in the fall, that parking problem will be solved. That all these parking lots that were closed for construction will be opened back up again, plus these new ones. Questions?
I would just ask, I mean, I think we all, well, I'll say first, I think we all have some sentimental feelings about the Heritage Campus, even if we weren't a student, right? It's been such a staple of our community, and I'm so excited about the changes being made there, and thank you so much for the vision and leadership to get that complete. Remind me, and you may have told us this already, are you planning a tour for us at some point, either later this year or early next year, to show off everything?
The short answer is yes. Jeff has a few more slightly in-depth details.
And the plan right now is that in late October, very early November, we'll have a sneak peek, invite the Regents and the press and some select students to come out and see it as well. And then we'll really do some larger openings in the following year, January Memorial Building, February White Library, and in those cases, we'll use those to kick off the 90th anniversary celebrations right where it all started at Memorial. So we got a plan in place, but details are still being worked out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, Dr. Turner?
Is there any additional plans for the setting the historical marker?
Yes, it's going to be part of the Memorial Building renovation. Yes.
Okay, is there a date set or no? So can?
The date for it's not been set yet, but no, it's on our list. Yes.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Schreibos?
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it. Ms. McDonald, recognize you for our regular contract review.
Thank you. Yes, this is our semi-end review of our professional service contracts. So following our color code and system, if it is, oh, excuse me. Let me bring that up. So if it is highlighted in yellow, then it is expiring in '24. If it's in light blue, it meant it could have a date adjustment. If it's in orange, that means it has already expired, and green is new. So we have two contracts that will be expiring in '24. That is Collier Johnson Woods and Wells Fargo. We did not have any contracts that had a date adjustment through this cycle, but we do have several contracts that have already expired. They're highlighted there in orange, which is, sorry, I have a little focus issue here. The police station, Windward Campus Central Plant, Windward Campus Emergency Response Training, South Side Campus Phase One, Phase One A, and then the commissioning. So all those have expired. And then at the bottom of this first page list, we have one new contract that was approved by the board earlier this year, and that is for this EDHVAC, and that was for KJ. Yep. And so there are no other changes on the contracts list. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. McDonald? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our pending business list that you have in your packet. We've talked already about our July workshop that we will have, that actually I don't see on here. Am I missing it? Anyway, we have a workshop on July 23rd, so y'all make sure that you're here, please. Yeah, so we don't have a regular board meeting in July, but we will have that workshop, okay? And everything else on here, no, nothing new, right?
No anomalies, everything's straightforward.
Nothing new on the pending business list. And with that, we will move to the consent agenda. Does anything need to be pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? That was Mr. Loeb and Mr. Garza as the second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Having already done number four on our regular agenda, we will move on to regular agenda item number five, and we'll welcome back to the podium Mr. Busby.
Okay, thank you so much. Today, I would like to present a request for approval from the Delmar College Board of Regents for naming opportunity for a gift of significance in alignment with an endowed gift. This is a proposal of the Learning Commons located on the ground floor of the White Library, located on Heritage Campus for Dwayne Sandlin. As a naming recognition, this naming would be for the life of the facility per policy. And Dwayne Sandlin, for a little bit of reference, provided a combined gift totaling 1.8 million dollars, just over that actually, for library services. It's an endowed program that's an excellence fund held at the foundation that directly supports the Delmar College Library Services at White Library and Heritage. So this is a request for approval of naming and authorization for Delmar College Administration to proceed with adding the naming to the facility. Just one sentence on Dwayne Sandlin for such a gift. At this point in time, in 41 years, this is the largest singular gift made by a one person or an entity. We've had some great gifts, but this was a Delmar College retiree who served for over 20 years as a counselor. And I talked to an alumnus, a retiree, Dr. Cheryl Foff, who happens to be his stepdaughter. And I said, you know, what led to this 1.8 million dollar bequest gift, particularly for White Library? And this gift happened in 2014, all right, so it was a few years ago. And she said her stepfather had a passion for Delmar College students, and in his mind, this particular gift impacted every student at Delmar College. As opposed to one program or another program, the library was able to touch in his mind every student and be a resource. And so that's why this gift of significance. What we're hoping to do is inspire other people who might consider a gift of such, but also to recognize this man who made such a great gift to support Delmar College students and to tell his story just a tad way. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Doctor Babaly.
Second.
Second by Mr. Loeb. Any discussion, any public comment? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you so much, and please pass along our thanks as well to the family, and we so appreciate gifts like this. And moving on to item number six on the regular agenda, to discuss possible annexation of Clarkwood Estates and County Road 36, Mr. Schreibos has come back to the microphone.
So in accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 130.066, automatic annexation of certain territory, as the city of Corpus Christi annexes property, then Delmar College may also annex the property, and that's what we're bringing to you today. That the city of Corpus Christi annexed 87.57 acre tract of land located at the northwest corner of County Road 36 and Farmer Market Road 2292, the Clarkwood Road. And then the annexation of the right-of-way of part of the county road, and so we're recommending that this annexation be pursued. And this is land that is in the Toloso Midway Independent School District Service area, and so this will be more residential coming in there as well.
Questions for Mr. Schreibos?
I have a comment, but then I'll make the motion. I just wanted to say I've heard that there may be an effort in this next legislative session to severely restrict even more cities' abilities, ability to annex. Where, I mean, now basically what they're able to do is if you want water service from the city, you have to agree to be annexed. There's apparently some bills being filed and lobbied for to remove that ability from cities statewide. So that is an issue for us because that's how we're growing our district tax base at this point. And so I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar screen, that it's something to watch for. But I'll make a motion to approve this.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Loeb, and Mr. Garza has seconded. Any discussion? Any public comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That motion also passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schreibos, and I will welcome Ms. McDonald back up to the mic.
Thank you. This particular presentation, this is policy work that is to comply with SB 18, which is the faculty tenure and employment that was passed during the Texas 88th legislative session. There will be several B policy sections that will be reviewed for board approval, but there are also those A administrative procedures that are part of this work that will, it serves as your notification, because some of them, of course, go follow hand in hand. As I said, the B sections are board policy for approval. The A sections are administrative procedures that provide you with the notice that there will be revisions, and again, this was impacted by SB 18. I do want to acknowledge our policy work team, Dr. Howcomb, Jessica Lanis, Jerry Henry, and we also have policy review and input through our shared governance process, through faculty council, chairs council, and deans council. And I do like to point out Jose Cortez. Jose, thank you for being here. He is the Chair of Faculty Council, and he helped lead the way with these revisions. So thank you for being here, Jose. So some of the highlights of the legislative changes, it addresses the granting of tenure. It allowed for dismissal of tenured faculty member for good cause at any time after providing the faculty member with an appropriate due process. The legislation provided a new definition of tenure. The tenure definition includes dismissal for cause and provides some very specific language for the definition of what good cause is. And one of the big shifts was only the governing board or governing body by recommendation of the CEO may grant tenure, whereas in the past, it was the CEO who granted tenure. So that is one big shift. A summary dismissal providing due process rights and post-dismissal appeal, that's one of the criteria or the new requirements, and then tenure faculty performance evaluation criteria. I do want to point out that the majority, I'm going to say like 80% of what is in this legislation, the college already had established in policy. So this was not something to where we had to start all over or start from scratch. The few shifts, what I mentioned, of course, we had to put the new definition. That was required in legislation. We needed to put the for good cause, what was prescribed in the legislation, what good cause and the definition of that, and then, of course, the granting of tenure shifted to the governing body or the governing board. You know, those were some of the main shifts. The other pieces we had, we might have had to tweak one little piece of something, but for the most part, we were already in compliance with what was provided in the new legislation. And in the content of the policy work, as we have in the past, if it's red wording, it's new. If it's redlined through the wording, that means we're deleting it. If it's light blue wording, that means it existed in one other section, and we relocated it to a different section. So as with any thing, I think you, most of you have been around enough that you know that if you make one change, it has a ripple effect. So this particular ripple effect effective six different policies and procedures within those policies. So here's a list of all the policies that were affected. I thought for time purposes, if you want me to go through every single one and all the different redline and redline version, I can, but I'll give you some of the highlights. You know, we have the faculty appeal and grievance process, evaluation process. There are some processes in multiple policies that said, like, for example, promotion confers tenure. Well, that no longer can happen. The tenure has to be conferred by the board. So that meant the promotion policy had to be changed because it says promotion, what we changed it to is promotion makes you eligible for the recommendation of tenure. So those are some of those little tweaks in wording that we had to change. Of course, under the tenure policy, it was a definition of tenure. Under reduction in force, that particular policy lists out, kind of outlines how we can, on reduction of force for faculty, it had a definition of tenure, so we had to change it to the new definition of tenure. The discharge for cause and procedure for dismissal of faculty, that, what we did in that section is we included the language for the very prescribed wording of what good cause is. So we moved it into B69 so that it's all in one place. You don't have to look at it before. You had to look at it in two different chapters and two different sections. So we moved it out of the following one, which is B5114, discharge for cause. When you look at it now, that's specifically for staff, and it references, if you want to see faculty discharged for cause, then you go to B69. So those are some of the highlights. Then, of course, under the tenure section, it talks about how the CEO makes the recommendation to the board to grant tenure. And then also provided, we worked with faculty council with Jose and his group and provided some extra information in the tenure policy, the B67, to make sure that if for some reason the board did not approve tenure, when they could reapply and what process to follow. So we made sure that we did put some wording in that on some of the input that faculty council had. So have any, except I know I'll be happy to go page by page with you if you would like, but that was kind of a summary and synopsis of our major changes. Now, if you have any questions for myself, if you have any questions for Dr. Howcomb or Mr. Cortez from faculty council, be glad to answer those.
I'm not seeing any desire to go page by page, but certainly open to questions, comments. Mr. Loeb?
I read the state law, and it said, you know, how we grant, how we approve tenure is in some ways up to us. Are we going to have that discussion later, or is this what that is?
This is how it gets to the board, which is through Dr. Eskimia, through the CEO. However, procedures the board wants to talk about, I'll leave that up to Dr. Eskimia and to general counsel. But that's not, the policy just has to say it has to come to the board now. So that's what our policy and procedures say, how it gets to the president, and then it gets to the board.
Yeah, thank you. I think the answer is yes. I think this is what this is right now. It's a shift in the language so that we can comply quickly with the statute. Again, it is, it was done primarily, developed primarily through the college, through the faculty councils, through all the various councils and so forth. But do you have like a specific? through all the various councils and so forth. But do you have like a specific, like, were you looking for a specific rollout for that, or?
I guess I just.
This is a little bit unceremonious.
You know, the state law gives us some options on how to approve, and I don't think, you know, when I ran for this office, I didn't run to do, you know, majority votes on who works for you.
Yeah.
And so I wouldn't mind us availing ourselves of the state law to, I mean, I guess we have to affirm your decision in some way, but I would like it to look more like that than us choosing who is and who is not tenured faculty.
Yeah. It, I guess.
Because that has been our tradition, and the state law allows us to bend towards our historic traditions.
Right. It says that basically the governing body, the board, is the only, lack of a better word, person that can grant tenure, but it's upon the recommendation of the CEO. So however you would like to see that come from Dr. Eskamia, that would be all's decision on how it would come from him, as far as who is going to be brought forward as being recommended for the board to confer or approve tenure.
Yeah.
Also, if I may ask.
Sure.
I think the faculty has a great deal of autonomy when it comes to tenure recommendations. They don't make decisions, but they do make the recommendations. And I think CEO retains that academic moral authority to preserve the traditions of tenure, principles of tenure. So the board simply approves the recommendations that come from the CEO on tenure basis. My concern is at the statewide level.
Yeah.
Can you tell me, Mr. President, what's the prevailing atmosphere when it comes to discussions of academic tenure, given the political environment? Where do we stand on that?
Well, so it depends what circle we fall in. It depends what grouping we fall in, in terms of higher ed institutions. I mean, IHEs per se, universities per law, as per statute, were really ultimately the primary focus when legislation was being developed. There was a point where community colleges thought that we might be in our own circle and maybe not even in the broader scheme part of the legislative intent. That was proven to be, the case was proven that community colleges fell in as well. That's obviously why we're here and moving this forward. So, but to answer your question, generally, it was very heated. It was very dragged out in dialogue. It was a very contentious issue during the last legislative session. Because so many community colleges do not have tenure policies across the state, we're one of, I think, 20 or so, less than, maybe 17s, 13s, something like that, just round numbers. And so as such, there too, we were a very small group that didn't even know if we were included. So it was all over the place. Ultimately, there was, there were decisions made. We ran things up the flagpole. Augie led that charge to find out, you know, to make sure absolutely where we fell in it. And obviously, here we are. As it moved forward, as Ms. McDonald referred to earlier, we were, we had so much of it already in place, you know, the very few tweaks, although significant some of them, those tweaks amounted to some serious policy change. And when, anytime now that I have to now bring a listing of recommend, of a recommendation, see, you're going to call it a singular recommendation, or is it a grouping of recommendations? You know, I think there's some nuances there that we need to make sure are very clear. That now that I have to bring it to the board is a very different practice, but everybody understands that it's just, it's the law, and we don't get to, there is some approaches, some nuanced approaches on how to do it, but at the end of the day, the board must review and for ultimate approval. We were hoping we were out up until the last moment, right, Augie? But here we are. That's my best explanation and recollection of everything that's happened over the past 18, 24 months almost.
Thank you.
But go ahead, Dave.
I just want to jump in. I mean, I think we don't have, we don't normally have hiring and firing authority over anybody but you. And as such, don't typically go through the same training and things like that, and don't have policies set up around that because of that.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I think we need to have a policy at the board level on, you know, for instance, our vote should be based on the good cause metrics, you know? If nobody had shown good cause as to why somebody shouldn't be made, appointed tenure, granted tenure, based on the process that happened at the faculty and at your level, I think we should be granting it. But we don't have anything in this that says that. It's just, it goes to the board. And I think we need to do some work on making sure people know that, you know?
Yeah.
That's what, you know, because otherwise, it becomes a political decision very quickly, and that's not appropriate to me.
No, that, you're absolutely right.
And that's not what our history is.
Absolutely right. Duly noted.
Yeah, and I think I would just ask Dr. Eskamia that you and council perhaps look at what would be appropriate for us. This is obviously new ground for all of the community colleges and other institutions who grant tenure. So what is appropriate for us to put some guidelines in place or some guardrails, if you will, so that it does inform our decision a little bit better and hopefully eliminates a tendency to go in political ways, because we certainly, nobody here wants to do that, for sure. Do you have, and I'm sorry, I should know this, when this will start, where we will start getting the recommendations from you?
Our cycle, just to kind of go back and make one point with Dr. Babaly mentioned, is we do have a very rigorous process to be eligible for tenure. So that comes on up through chairs, deans, and then with the CAO, Dr. Halcom. And then that recommendation is made to Dr. Eskamia, and then Dr. Eskamia makes the recommendation to the boards. We very specifically did not say that the governing body has to review the whole process. It's a process, and then it stops at the recommendation. So that's why we left that in there. So that's one point. So you saw in here, but there's other policy work that goes with this about the different criteria to even be eligible for tenure that you have to meet. And then the recommendation goes on up through the chain of, the chain of command. The second thing is, there's, like I said, we purposely did not put that in there, because I understand, I listen, I hear what everyone says, we purposely left it at a recommendation level. And so there's, the effective date is, it was September 1st of last year, but our cycle started before September 1st, so that got to run through on, I'm going to say, the old rules. So the effective date of this legislation was September 1st of '23. But our cycle starts pretty much when our new academic year starts in August. So this new cycle will start in August, and it runs a process through fall, spring. So the recommendation from Dr. Halcom really doesn't get to the president until the spring. And then it would come to the board after that. So you really won't anticipate seeing recommendations from Dr. Eskamia to you until late spring, early summer.
Once a year?
Once a year, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for that clarification. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Just one quick point. Madam Regent, what Dr. Eskamia was alluding to was that the way the bill is written, if you actually sit down with the definitions, it doesn't include community colleges. And so that led to a lot of confusion around the state. But we've concluded that it was a Scrivener's error. They just used the wrong definition. And we got informal word that, from the commissioner of higher ed, that, no, you were intended to be included. So, and I think it went into effect September 1, 2023.
Right.
But the policies, I don't think, are required to be in place until September 1, 2024.
With our next cycle, we'll start with our next cycle, yes.
Right. So between now and the next time this comes up, Regent Loeb, your comments are duly noted, and we'll come up with something specific. So you're not, you don't become the target for lobbying. We hear you.
Thank you.
And one other point I'd like to mention is, along with SB 18, becomes a new reporting compliance to the state, and that is something that it says the board will, basically, we show the state that we are compliant with SB 18. And it's really basically affirming that we're complying, but we also have to submit policies. So we do have to submit our policies and procedures to the state. And I believe that deadline is either September 1st or October 1st. We have a lot of deadlines around the fall. But so SB 18 will have a deadline for the board to certify that we're complying, and that we have to file our policies and procedures with the state.
Thank you. Well, as with everything, we will follow the law and
Yes.
do everything like we're supposed to. I believe Ms. McDonald needs from us an approval of the B policy changes as presented, if there's a motion for that.
So moved.
Dave, Mr. Loeb moved, Mr. Kroll seconded. Any discussion on that item? Any public discussion on that item? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Turner, are you voting? Okay, that's, just checking. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McDonald. Okay. I don't think we have any other business. Any reason to go into closed session, counsel? Nope. Nope. Okay. Wow. I believe that, oh, calendar, let's do calendaring real quick before I let everybody go. Thank you. I've got mine, too. Yep. We already mentioned no board meeting, formal board meeting in July, but we will meet July 23rd at 11:00 for our budget workshop. Bring your questions. Like I said, I think that'll be a really good discussion for us. The August calendar is also attached, Board Day on August 13th, and then August 27th, our public hearings and the adoption of our budget for the next year. Anything else for calendaring? Okay. Seeing no other business or no other comments, we are adjourned at 2:22 PM. Thank you all.